Welcome, everybody, to the Lakeport City Council meeting today. And LT, well, let's start this thing off right. Call to order, please.
Yes, so, Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Protem Spur.
President. We're just returning back from closed session where there's no action to be reported. With that, Chief, could you leave us in the public?
Yes.
I'll begin.
(laughing).
Ready to begin.
We're religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can tell, this is the last change. Tim Barnes is ill, so we're taking over. We, all of us. Okay. Looking for an acceptance of the agenda, and is there any urgency items, first of all?
No urgency.
Okay. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to do the consent agenda. And with that, I'll have to wear my glasses. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Any council member may request that any item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under their regular agenda. Removing an item will be considered following the consent agenda calendar portion of the agenda. Okay. A, ordinance. Waive the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per Government Code Section 36934. B, minutes. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of April 2nd, 2019. C, renew the energy emergency resolution Menesino complex fire confirming the continued existence of local emergency for the Menesino complex. D, renew the emergency resolution February 2019 storms confirming the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Application WP 2019-001. Approve the application with staff recommendations for the 2019 grilling on the green event. F, application 2019-015. Approve the event with staff recommendations for the 2019 Library Park Farmers Market. H, contract. Approve the agreement with the Lake County Tourism Improvement District for administrative services and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. I, personnel request. Authorize staff to temporarily fill a police sergeant position with a police officer but leaving position budgeted as sergeant. J, out-of-town travel. Authorize the out-of-state travel as requested by city manager and community development director to attend the REC Con, the Global Retail Real Estate Convention in Las Vegas, Nevada, May 20th through the 21st, 2019, I would imagine, right?
Yes.
And that's all that's on the consent agenda. Does anybody on the council wish to talk or pull anything? We have somebody in the public who wants to talk about it. Anybody in the public would like to comment or pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the start. Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next thing, public presentations. Any public input? Kelly?
I do not have any.
None. Okay. Does anybody in public want to speak about something that is not on the agenda but we can't make any decisions on it? But you can speak if you like.
Oh, my gosh.
No? Okay. Moving right along, proclamation. Mayor Barnes, who is now ill, to present a proclamation for 2019 sexual assault awareness will be done by Mariaa Turner.
Thank you. I hardly have his flair, but I'll try. With the members of Lake Family Resource Center, please join me. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport designating the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lakeport. Whereas in 2018, Lake County agencies responded to the needs of at least 289 sexual assault victims and their significant others and/or family members. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, and the partnership between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas Lake Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the county of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services, continuing support, advocacy, and accompaniment to victims, survivors, and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas staff and volunteers of the Lake Family Resource Center Rape Crisis Center work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information. And whereas Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships improves the quality of service for those impacted by sexual violence. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate the month of April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Lakeport, and calls upon all local governments, schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from violence and exploitation. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Awesome.
Yep.
Okay. So, sexual assault does not discriminate, and I always say that anybody can be a victim of rape, and when they are, Lake County truly does have an amazing sexual assault response team, and they just, they work so diligently, like 24/7, responding at 3 o'clock in the morning, sometimes for eight to, I don't know, 16 hours at a time, sitting in a hospital with somebody, and just really working together at this very dark moment for somebody. And without our team, we just, without all of the Lake County collaboration, we wouldn't be this strong. And so, the proclamation did mention 289 people, 77 of which were served through our Rape Crisis Center. That's 77 people in one year, and that's not, that's not high, that's really low, because these are people who are reporting, and half of the county sexual assaults go unreported. So, we encourage everybody to speak up and talk about sexual assault and spread the awareness. And speaking of, Alicia is going to talk about Denim Day, which is an awareness event, so you can talk about it.
Good evening. So, us at Lake Family Resource Center would like to invite everybody in the public to stand against sexual violence with us on Wednesday, April 24th, by breaking the dress code. Wear your jeans to work. So, it is National Denim Day on April 24th. And why denim? Well, that's a great question, so let me tell you. Back in 1998, there was a young lady taking her very first driving lesson. Her 45-year-old married driving instructor came and picked her up at her home and drove her to a very remote area. He pulled her out of her car and wrestled her out of her blue jeans and proceeded to rape her. He threatened her with death and then made her drive the car back home. She did tell her parents, and he was subsequently arrested and convicted and put in jail. Great ending to a bad story. However, it doesn't end there. He appealed his conviction, and the Chief Justice of the Italian Supreme Court said, quote, "Because her jeans were very, very tight, it could not have been raped. She had the consent, so therefore, she had to consent by helping him remove the jeans, and therefore, no rape." And his conviction was overturned. This inflamed the ladies at the Italian Parliament, and they showed up the next day wearing denim. And it became a worldwide symbol of speaking out against sexual violence. Thank you.
By the way, all of our staff's going to be wearing jeans on the 24th.
(laughing). Thank you.
Is it the 24th? Yeah.
24th.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause).
Okay, we have another proclamation declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and that is also going to be read by Mariaa Turner.
This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport designating the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lakeport. Whereas approximately 3 million children are reported abused and neglected in the United States each year, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, all citizens should become more aware of the effects of child abuse and its prevention, and finding solutions depends on the involvement of people throughout the community. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and supporting parents in raising their children in safe and nurturing environments. Whereas new local initiatives to prevent child abuse include building resilience, a county-wide collaboration, adverse childhood experiences, nurturing families program, differential response, RCS wraparound services, infant massage, motherwise, and the protective factors. And whereas events take place in the community to promote awareness as follows: child abuse awareness posters distributed in local businesses throughout the county for the month of April; April 13th, 2019, children's advocacy walk and festival, a mini-festival on the 14th at Senior Center in Clear Lake Oaks; child abuse prevention placemats dispersed the month of April at the Lakeport Taco Bell; children's Memorial Day Flag Ceremony. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate the month of April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Lakeport, and calls its citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live.
You want to take it?
Thank you. (applause).
Thank you, guys, all, for doing this amazing proclamation that we get every single year, right? So, I just wanted to touch a little bit and tell you guys, so, a single incident of child abuse impacts not only the child, but the family, the community, and the society at large. So, child abuse is a core underlying factor to many of the ongoing struggles of our community. So, we have high rates of school dropouts, we have homelessness, we have incarceration, and we have chronic health issues. So, in 2018, there was 978 reported cases of child abuse in Lake County alone. 136 of those were verified child victims, which came to one report every nine hours, and cost financially, for the whole child's life, $29.3 million. So, Lake County has come to, of course, we have the Children's Council, which provides education and training to schools, parent groups, community organizations, and professional groups about the prevention of child abuse both inside and outside of our homes. So, we have a bunch of events that take place not just in April, but throughout the whole year. Our main focus is definitely in April, but we want to keep that going throughout the whole year, because, could you imagine what we could do with $29.3 million in this community if we didn't have child abuse? So, I do invite all of you on April 26th for closing ceremonies, which will take place at the Lake County Office of Education out in front. There'll be a flag raising ceremony. I encourage all of you guys to attend that, and I just wanted to thank you for letting us come today and for supporting child abuse prevention in hopes that we can end it.
Thank you. (applause). Got it? Okay, ma'am? Thanks.
All right. We're going to change the next item up for council business. We want to do the Concerts in the Park first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The 2000, actually, this summer is going to be the 40th year of the Concerts in the Park in Lakeport. And it'll be 35 years that BiCoastal Media has been running those concerts. So, it's been a long legacy and something that's very well enjoyed by our citizens and lots of visitors coming into our county. This year, BiCoastal Media wanted to change it up a little bit, and their contract doesn't end until, this is the last year on this contract, and they'll bring it back for you next year, but we want to do amendment to their contract. We're asking, they want to add a food court and a wine tasting garden to the event. The area for wine in the park will be in the park, and it'll be roped off, and anyone, you have to have the bracelets that go in, and anyone under 21 is not allowed in that tasting area. And then, the food court, they're planning on putting it in the parking lot here. What I'd ask for council is to give staff a little flexibility to work with them, because if it's going at one or two, then maybe we might want to block some spaces on the street. But if we get a good turnout, would that be safer to have it in the parking lot and rope that off for just the food court? So, anyway, Sean is here from BiCoastal Media. If you have any questions of him on this item, and that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Council?
Well, I remember at a California League of Cities meeting that was held over in Cloverdale, that we went in there on a Friday night, and they had like a food truck thing, and I could see that this particular type of thing could really catch some, you know, some rhythm and get some momentum going and some traction, and I think it could be a really big thing. I already love the Concerts in the Park, but I think the missing element has been the fact that we've kind of made it so that they couldn't do what they want to do, and I think this would just open it up. And when you go to Cloverdale there, it's an entire, like, street fair, and it's just this, you know, this great festive atmosphere, and I think it would just enhance the entire event and just make it a little, I think it might start slow, but I could just see this growing and be part of that future contract, probably. But I really remember well that whole idea about the food trucks, and there's a big rage. Not that they got to be food trucks, but just the fact that people get involved and they want to do that, make it more of a thing where they could come down, they don't have to, like, eat before they come. I just think it would be a really nice addition to an already great event.
Do you have the cameras?
Well, I couldn't agree more. I think it's long overdue to try this, so it'd be really fun. I think most people come down, sometimes they don't make it because they're trying to get some food to bring down, or they head up to a restaurant, so I think it's a great idea.
The only thing that I had is when I looked at the map, I thought that the wine area might be a little tight, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
The wine over here, she thinks, still looks tight.
Let's go with winemaker.
But like you said, I think being flexible is the key. If you give us some flexibility to work with that, yeah.
Yeah. The one question I had is about the food park. Are we going to get, are they going to get, like, different people, restaurants, from the area to have different booths, or is it going to be just one booth? If you would like to come up and talk, that's fine.
Might take me a half second.
All right, not a problem.
Well, he's walking up here. I was wondering if they looked at putting the food trucks along Third and Park Street in those parking spaces, so that people don't have to cross the street, but they'd be connected to the park?
And just close off the street instead.
Yeah, oh, because you'd have to close the whole street, or?
Yeah, if you're going to have, you'd have to close the whole street. Your barricades have to go all the way to the end of the block to be safe. That's correct.
If, are you?
Couldn't you face them in, though? Could you put them along the curb in the parking space and then have the opening be on the sidewalk side?
Are you talking about Third Street on the south side?
No, I think you're talking about Parks. It's actually Parks Street.
Park Street and Third, so the whole corner, that you could line the park corner with food trucks or tents, so that on the other side, you could still drive. They would, that would be the back of it, and then the front side would be along the side, so you would walk from the park across the sidewalk to the opening of the food truck.
It may not all be food trucks, though, so I'll let Sean address it.
So, to be careful for the restaurants on Main Street, as well as Juicy's and Park Place. I was just looking at doing one, possibly two, per concert for this first year. That way, they can make some money, everybody makes some money, everybody's happy. So, I'd like to keep it as minimal as possible, one to two each week. It would be local people that we would use, and we would just rotate throughout the 10-week series.
So, you'd have two people, and then next week, you'd be two different people, type of?
Correct. And that way, we could rotate around and keep everybody happy.
Well, that'd be good, because you could kind of tailor it somewhat with the kind of music, too, so.
Yes, indeed. The flavor to go along with the flavor of the music. On the wine part, we're flexible. We can widen that or shorten it, either way.
Well, as jammed as the concerts are, usually, I anticipate a much stronger response than will fit in what is this little orange? Like, it's like the width of two little picnic tables, so that already looks a little cramped.
We can spread that out, no problem.
Switch the two.
Right.
I think we can certainly work with, Doug and I can work with these folks on figuring out their parking with the council authority, you know, to close parking spaces or whatever. I think we can easily work that out.
Yeah, I think we could do parallel, and, yeah. If we could work together, we'll get it resolved.
As long as we have your permission to do that. And they also want to provide a few more handicap parking spots, too, because we, you know, we could use a few more during the concert, so some of that will be designated for ADAs.
Super.
Cool.
Didn't we approve food, like, a few years ago?
We did.
Okay.
And then, they, was it another, Director of Management, didn't want it, even on the concert, even on the contract, so we took it out of the contract, and so, we're bringing it back again.
Very welcome, we tried.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Any other questions?
Well, I think that restaurants are still going to do great as well, and so, I hope we kind of keep track of that, because I'd like to see them grow even, you know.
Definitely, and includes.
Yeah, exactly.
That's on time.
Okay.
Cool.
And according to our municipal code, the council needs to approve any commercial use of parking lots.
Yeah.
Because once has to come before you every time there's a request for this type of thing.
That does bring one other question. Does he need to get, like, an ABC license for the day type thing, for each day?
There will be a permit, an ABC permit, part of their, yeah, a big part of the requirements. They have to have that.
Okay.
And then, the county will deal with the food thing, as far as allowing them to eat the required thing for serving.
The PD will work with him, make sure the alcohol licenses are taken care of. So, it's not a big deal.
Thank you.
We all love the concert, so.
I know. Thank you very much. Just trying to shake it up a little bit.
Anybody else from the public would like to speak? Or have comments? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'm looking to approve the addendum to the BiCoastal Media 2017 through 2019 concert series contract, allowing food service area and wine tasting garden with the appropriate insurance coverage. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next on the agenda will be
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Will be the police chief and his quarterly stats.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. This year, I wanted to try to do a better job at keeping the council and the public aware of our statistics and some of the work we do more frequently than I have in the past, so I plan to bring this every quarter, and then a recap at the end of the year. And this by no means is all-encompassing of everything that the police department does, but these are some of the highlights and some of the statistics that the public has an interest in, so, and I think staff left you everyone a copy, and there's some available for the public out there. But starting with response times, priority one, which is emergency, in this first quarter, we had a 3 minutes and 13 second response time. Priority two, non-emergency, was 12 minutes and 4 seconds. Priority three, which is cold calls, when we're available, was 16 minutes and 50 seconds. We responded to 1,223 community-generated calls for service, made 405 traffic stops, had 485 officers initiated incidents for a total of 2,113 activities that a police officer either responded to or initiated in the past three months. Part one crimes, as you've heard before, are the crimes that the FBI uses to report on crime in the United States for crime rates in communities throughout the US. And those include homicide, we had zero, rape, we had one, robbery, we had one, assaults, we had 16, burglaries, 10, larcenies, 29, stolen vehicles, two, arson's, zero, and domestic violence, 10. Felony arrests, 23, misdemeanors, 85. DUI arrests and offenses, we've had 14 arrests on 32 different DUI charges, 13 traffic collisions, five property damage only collisions, which are usually generally on off-street with very minor damage, or on-street with minor damage, no injuries. 16 parking sites, 31 moving sites, six infraction sites. And then, our detective did 32 criminal investigations, and those are generally felony crimes, some serious misdemeanors of the complex that he would work. And we wrote two affidavits for search warrants and further insidious cases. One item that I just newly added, and I think it's important for the public to be aware of the types of training that their police officers are receiving throughout the year, so I've added that. All of your police staff in this quarter received 391 and a half hours of training combined, and that included training in law enforcement teletype systems, communication skills, de-escalation, domestic violence, elder independent adult abuse, first aid, CPR, hearsay testimony, high-tech crimes, human trafficking, FEMA and incident command training, racial and cultural diversity training, sovereign citizen extremists, terrorism, vehicle pursuit policy, general policy training, Native American cultural awareness, chief city manager training, management and leadership training, active shooter, confidential records release, tribal jurisdictional training as it relates to additional local, state, and federal jurisdictions, and how that all works, use of force, current legal issues, camera footage release, evidence-based policing, fentanyl detection, communicating during disasters, and lawsuit mitigation. And that is the report. Now, I think what you have here is the
Now, I think what you have here is the SV two-thirty and the AB three-ninety-two legislation?
Yes.
For the next item?
Yes.
Just a motion to receive and file. Sorry about that. Basically, is there any comments on the statistics? Okay, anybody from the public want to comment on the statistics?
Thank you, chief. I just wanted to say thank you. This is a very impressive report, both your super quick response times, as well as the time that you're investing in making sure that our department is trained and ready to deal with situations that are coming at us.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
There is a suggested motion for this. Do you need a?
I, I thought it was just a receive and file. I don't have the staff report in front of me. Actually, I don't have the staff.
It was a motion to receive and file.
I think that's what it was, yeah.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the police statistics report for the first quarter of 2019. Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have it. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, next order of business is SV two-thirty and AB three-ninety-two, public police.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. What you have before you is a request to review information related to California Senate Bill two-thirty and California Assembly Bill three-ninety-two, and consider a resolution and letter if you decide it's appropriate to be sent to the Assembly and the Senate, and that is, again, should you decide to support the request in the end. This is a very complex issue that's been going on for well over a year and a half. I did provide what I believe is a very detailed staff report with multiple attachments. I'm not gonna go line by line through that staff report. I'm hoping that everybody's had an opportunity to look at it. What I'm gonna do is try to do a short summary of what I feel is going on, and then leave that to your consideration, but. So, back in early 2018, there was a Assembly Bill called nine-thirty-one that sought to change the standards of use of force in California. There was a lot of communication back and forth between the Senate member, the Assembly members that authored that, and some of the police groups on what they felt would or wouldn't work best for law enforcement in California. And ultimately, that bill was taken off the table due to not enough discussion, there needed to be more discussion, so everybody kind of agreed to take it off the table and start again this year. So what came forward this year was two different versions of use of force. Bills for changes in California, that was the Senate Bill two-thirty, and the Assembly Bill three-ninety-two. I do wanna say that I do believe that the standards on use of force and some of the language does need to change in California. However, it's, this is a very critical issue, and it needs to be done right, in my opinion, to protect the community we serve, protect the officers that are out there handling the calls, and protect the jurisdictions from civil litigation that we really shouldn't have. So there's a lot of interest in it, but basically, Senate Bill two-thirty, which is very lengthy in its writings, basically what it does is it seeks, first of all, to change the hundred-year-old Penal Code statute regarding use of force against a fleeing felon, which that portion of it's unconstitutional and has been for years. But then it goes on to focus on leaving the use of force standards consistent with what has been decided by the Supreme Court in Graham versus Connor and Tennessee versus Connor since nineteen-eighty-five and nineteen-eighty-nine, which essentially is that an officer's use of force must be judged by that of a reasonable, what a reasonable officer would do acting under the same set of circumstances, and not to be judged by twenty, by the benefit of twenty-twenty hindsight when analyzing all these facts later, when the court wasn't there to be involved in a situation that may have happened in one or two seconds. So essentially, it, it does that, it keeps consistent with the longstanding Supreme Court decisions, and it also requires extensive and detailed policy changes that would be consistent with all five-hundred-plus law enforcement agencies in the state of California. And then it would require detailed training for all eighty to ninety thousand police officers in the state of California. And going to AB three-ninety-two for a second, basically, that one seeks to change the language, which is different from that of the Supreme Court decisions, and it also does not have components in it to require everybody to have the same policies, and it also does not have components to require this detailed training on things such as use of force, de-escalation, responding to calls with, that are related behavioral health or mental illness. So that's kind of a summary of them, and I feel that with all the detailed policy and training, Senate Bill two-thirty is the right way to go, is supported by all the law enforcement. And the key to, if you wanna make changes in use of force, and you wanna reduce the incidence in use of force, which we do, the key to doing all that is policy and training. You're not gonna be successful with making a difference by just changing the language in the law. You have to go further, and you have to train and continually train and continually update policies. And we're already ahead of the game here, because as you saw in the previous report, we're already doing the de-escalation training, we're already keeping our policies updated. We're gonna be, we're close right now to being in line with what would be required if Senate Bill two-thirty is the one that passes. So that's, that's a kind of a quick synopsis of the bills, and rather than going through a lot more detail, I prefer to leave it at that and take any questions the council or the public may have regarding these bills. I can say that they're rapidly evolving and changing, at least in the case of Senate Bill two-thirty. Last Thursday, there was some significant amendments made to it, which staff left copies for council members and the public. But basically, in a nutshell, those significant changes had to do with more policy language, more policy direction, and more training components. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and if council agrees and so chooses, I would ask for a motion to support Senate Bill two-thirty and oppose Assembly Bill three-ninety-two, authorize the attached motion, authorize the mayor to sign the letter, which will be sent to your, our local representatives that serve our community, as well as the authors of the bills, as well as numerous other senators and assembly members who are co-authors or involved in support or opposition, and also be sent to cal chiefs for distribution to who they so believe it should go to.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from the council?
Chief, could you speak to why you're bringing this request now? It seems really early in the, in the year.
Because they are, there are ongoing discussions as we speak. Assembly Bill three-ninety-two was already in the Public Safety Committee last Tuesday. It actually passed the Public Safety Committee, and generally, after that, it would go to the General Assembly floor, but it was referred back by the chair to another committee, which is a signal that they feel there needs to be more discussion on it, on that particular bill. And there's also potentially continuing changes to that bill or Senate Bill two-thirty. So, I mean, I think it's important at this time and not to wait, to let assembly members and let senators know what a position might be on that, so that they're aware of what, what local jurisdictions might feel about a particular bill. Because I feel that, you know, them hearing back from the community or other elected leaders of communities is gonna have an impact on how this all plays out in the end. So it's likely that it will go clear to the end in August, and it is possible that both of these bills could pass, the Assembly and the Senate, which is not a good thing, because then they're gonna both go to the governor's desk. And there really needs to be a solid bill, one solid bill that moves forward, not two. And so that's, that's my desire to bring it forward now. I think waiting too long wouldn't be good.
Any other questions?
So, chief, what's the status? I mean, here in Lake County, the sheriff's department is down, you know, like dozen officers or more, we're down three. What, statewide, how do we stand as far as filling all the law enforcement positions that are needed? Or is that an issue?
Well, we're consistent. It, it's a consistent problem in many rural counties, Lake County included, with keeping law enforcement positions filled. There's, there's various factors that play into that, but yes, we know our local sheriff's department is down significantly. We happen to be down three officers right now, which is a significant issue for us, because that puts us at the bare minimum, and then when I get another one that's going off on a medical, now I'm in the minuses, I have emergency staffing issues, and I'm trying to keep bodies out on the street in the interest of protecting the public. And to me, these, this is the biggest issue facing law enforcement in decades, if not a hundred years. This is, is going to.
Disincentivize.
Well, it is. If the wrong use of force bill passes and the, and, you know, I'll just be blunt and give you an example, is Assembly Bill three-ninety-two, I believe it's gonna put officers in a very dangerous situation, to where they're gonna be second guessing what they're doing, and it's also gonna cause officers not to wanna go out and proactive. It may cause me not to be willing to tell them to go out and be proactive, because if they get into these situations where their life's in danger and we don't have enough resources, where they have all the tools that might be required, then I think that also puts the community in danger. So this, this is a very significant issue facing law enforcement statewide. We're already in a statewide staffing crisis. There's nationally, there's a, a decrease in people that wanna go into law enforcement for numerous reasons, and with the wrong restrictions on, on this, it's gonna make it worse. And I think in the end, if this is not done right, the ultimate people that are gonna lose are the communities we're protecting. They're gonna see less law enforcement being able to respond, and because, you know, if I have certain restrictions, I have to first look after the safety of my staff, then I have to look after the liability of our jurisdiction, and I can't put either in a situation that's, that's gonna bankrupt us with lawsuits or things like that. So it's, it's a very critical situation, and I think that's, that's, that's the reason why I asked to bring it forward so quickly. There's, there's other cities that are, that, one that I know of that's already gone to city council, many more that are, that are looking to go to their councils now. I've been asked by a few people for our staff report and our documents, which I've sent to those cities, those police chiefs, to bring forward to their city councils. So that's my, my position on it. I, you know, I want our council to have enough information to make an independent decision and determine if they feel that's appropriate to agree with me or not. But that's, that's what I feel on the seriousness of this situation.
Well, the reason I ask is 'cause it seems to me that passing of three-ninety-two, where you criminalize police activities, put them in danger by not having the ability to do what they need to do, and haul them into court in a, in a after-the-fact situation that's not realistic, because they were doing it in the, in the heat of the moment, what a normal officer would do. It just seems that the last thing we need to do is be taking people out of the ideal professional becoming law enforcement, because they have the chance of litigation, of being criminally accused, and that kind of thing, and it just seems that the only thing this could do is make a problem that's already bad, make it even worse by disincentivizing police officers getting involved, because of the nature of this type of, you know, criminal activity that could be charged against them, so I.
I think that's a very serious issue, but I do wanna go back and make it clear that we wanna minimize use of force, particularly deadly force. We do not wanna have to use it. But unfortunately, we're in a business where we have to be prepared to use force all the way up to deadly force to protect ourselves or our community. We don't wanna do that. I don't know any officer that goes out and says, "I hope I get into a situation today." That's, that's the most terrible thing you could ever have to go through. And nobody wants to do it. We wanna minimize that as much as possible, but at the same time, we wanna be able to protect ourselves, protect the community, and survive. And if you got one officer out there, he has to be able to go from this piece of force to this piece of force in an instant to properly defend himself and the community. He can't be required to go down a line by himself and say, "I gotta try this, I gotta try that." Within one second, he has to decide what the most, most appropriate action is for, for the protection of himself and the community, but I just wanted to be real clear on that. We don't wanna have these situations, we wanna avoid them, but you're not gonna change the way officers use force without good policy, updated policy, and good continuing, ongoing training that California law enforcement does not have right now. We have very limited training on the, the de-escalation and the responding to calls regarding mental health and things like that. It needs to be vastly improved. The Senate Bill two-thirty, I think, is the key to making that happen. It's gonna require the training, it's gonna require the policies, and everyone's gonna have to be held to the same standard. That's the key to making anything work. I don't see any of that in the other bill. And also, if, if the other bill passed, we'd still have to then go back and figure out these policies and training, and then pay for it, all the local jurisdictions. One thing that Senate Bill two-thirty does have right now is if, there's a provision that if the Commission on State Mandates determines that any of this stuff is mandated by the state, there's gonna be measures for reimbursement to pay cities back for what it costs to train these police officers. I don't see any of those provisions in AB three-ninety-two. We'd be paying for it without it, because we'd have to do it anyway.
Any more comments? Anybody from the public like to speak on this?
Michael Green. Just a question, and I know it is early in the legislative year, and probably this is coming from police chiefs and their recommendations, but maybe I'm not seeing things in AB three-ninety-two that the police chief's organization does, or that you do, chief. I'm just not seeing a change. I'm just, what I see is an additional finding that people with physical, mental disabilities or something may be more likely to experience greater levels of physical force. But in the text, that's a finding, and in the text of the bill itself, I don't see where a change is being made that is gonna substantially improve or provide a disincentive to, to good policing. And I compare and contrast that with what I see in Senate Bill two-thirty, which I'm glad to hear police chiefs is on board with that, but in terms of the actual impact on the department, I mean, you were mentioning the last item, three-hundred-and-ninety staff hours of training. This looks like the sort of thing that AB three-ninety-two would probably try to put in there later. Specific training things that would, de-escalation, cultural bias, cultural competency, you know. So I'm not arguing that these are all good things to put in the training, but I'm just curious why it's a good idea in Senate Bill two-thirty to add this laundry list and a potential that you'll get reimbursed for the cost of that additional training. It's not a lock. That's pretty boilerplate language in Section Five, versus, I don't see any real change under AB three-ninety-two at this point, and again, it's early in the year, it can get vetted and amended, no problem. Before cities and counties start rushing to, to take positions on bills that haven't fully gelled, I just wonder if you could drill down into, or, or city attorney could drill down into the specific bills and say, "This is what makes three-ninety-two kind of a deal." and say, "This is what makes 392 kind of a deal killer for police chiefs, and this is why Senate Bill 230 is the better mousetrap." It almost sounds like Senate Bill 230 was introduced to offset whatever concerns were raised in AB 392, but I'm just not seeing it. So Senate Bill 230, if everyone agrees with that, no problem. Better training is always a good idea. But the opposition on AB 392, I don't know. I'm just not seeing it. So a little more education on that may help the council to make a position on that as well.
So I can address that. Are you going to take on that?
Well, Mayor Protem, I think that Mr. Green may be, it's a little bit confusing, the printouts that the legislature provides. And the italicized text is actually just recent amendments to the bill. But AB 392 actually is a very significant change in the text of these particular provisions, the penal code provisions, which, as the chief mentioned, haven't been changed since like the late 1800s or something. And so in effect, they're not actually the standards that govern use of force in California. It's the constitutional, federal constitutional standard that applies because that is now the floor, if you will. So what AB 392 is actually doing is it's creating an entirely new standard, not entirely new, I mean, it's using a lot of the standards that Supreme Court has laid out. But it is changing them slightly, making them sound more like the standards for self-defense that a civilian would use if they were having a self-defense, defense to criminal prosecution. So it's making it a more difficult standard to meet where an officer charged with some type of use of, excessive use of force.
And to, if I may, to address more on Mr. Green's comment. So Assembly Bill 392 is essentially the same as what Assembly Bill 931 was in 2018. Basically, it, basically what it does is it changes, like the city attorney was saying, the language and the use of force in California to a necessary standard rather than a reasonable standard. And there's some other concerns that I have with it, such as wording in there that it doesn't define certain things as well as Senate Bill 230 does. And Assembly Bill 392, when it was 971, never had any of these proposed changes during 2018 or so far yet this year. But in discussions that Cal chiefs, lobbyists, and other association lobbyists are having with our legislatures, they are trying to make changes that everyone feels would be beneficial to making the right changes in use of force in California. So the, all these italicized changes that you're seeing got added in on April 11th, I believe, was the last update to Senate Bill 230 that added in additional language and additional training requirements. And so far, we haven't seen any of that come into AB 392. So that's, goes back to why I was saying, I think, you know, the more training, the more policy you have, that's how we're going to change use of force, that's how we're going to save lives. That's what's going to create less police shootings. The more we can train officers, the more we can regulate with policy equals less use of force situations. With the language that's in 392 as it sits now, all it's going to do is change the standard and put police in a worse situation to where you could have officers charged or more liability on cities without doing training and policy development. So hopefully that gives you a little more information.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, with that, bringing it back to council.
Well, I just wanted to first thank Chief for following these because I know it takes a lot of time to stay on top of it and bringing the information back to us. It's really helpful so we're not surprised later.
I appreciate that because it's very complex and rapidly evolving and it is almost a full-time job to try to stay on top of it. And, you know, I'm looking at stuff every day to try to stay on top of this.
They're really moving fast and I don't really know if they're listening to anyone, but it's worth definitely trying to put in what is going to work for us and what's not. So thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll make a motion to support SB 230 and oppose AB 392. Authorize the attached resolution and direct the mayor to sign a letter to be sent to appropriate members of the California Assembly and Senate. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next up is the Community Development Director for Clean Water Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. This is a renewal with amendment to the previous Clean Water Program Agreement that existed between both the City of Lakeport and the county and the City of Clear Lake. It's kind of gone by the wayside and actually expired a couple of years back due to some staffing issues with the County Department of Water Resources. And we haven't necessarily been keeping up on all of our items. I have great faith in the new staff that's over there. We've been meeting very consistently over the past year trying to get this program back up on its feet. We've resubmitted old reports that weren't properly submitted in the years past. And it came to our attention that this agreement had actually expired. In doing so, we also looked over some of the issues that were occurring with this agreement in the past. The main one is it calls out a number of specialized working groups that were kind of hard to manage. So what this agreement tries to do is kind of consolidate those all together. Additionally, the other problem is that the state's also added some additional mandates into this that would kind of necessitate, you know, two or three other working groups. So we figured it was better to kind of consolidate all those together, give the advisory council the ability to create special working groups if necessary, but otherwise conduct all the business together in one group. So all these, this agreement is, I believe, going before the city council the end of this week or at their next upcoming meeting. And then it will also be going to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Additionally, we're also seeking, you know, the mayor's not here this evening, but we'll need to appoint one member of your council to the board as well as our Stormwater Program Manager, which either be myself or Bonnie Sharp in our office. But if that doesn't happen this evening, we can change that.
I was just going to ask, do you need that appointment before May 7?
No, no. So we might, if we want to just pull that portion of the motion off and just move forward with the agreement and wait on that, that'd be fine. There's no...
We have an appointment to the Airport Commission coming up on May 7 also. So I don't know if you, it's up to council if they want to take it tonight or if you want to wait until May 7 to do that appointment when the mayor's here.
Yeah, there's no rush on appointing anybody. There's not going to be a meeting until probably end of May, early June. But any questions on the agreement? The previous one lapsed and this one replaces it and tries to kind of capture some of the issues that were occurring with it in the past.
Does the council have any questions?
No.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Don't all run up at one time. Bringing it back to council, did you want to...
So I just moved to adopt the agreement providing for implementation and maintenance of the Lake County Clean Water Program, period. And then we could take up the adoption at the next meeting of the, I mean, the assignment of them.
I'm just curious if anyone wanted to, Mireia wants to do it? Okay.
Well, then I'll amend my motion. I mean, because the mayor is, he's no better than the rest.
I think it's the mayor on the point.
Well, they can fight over it next time. And he wants to do it too. So I'll second your motion.
Which is?
Your original motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement, but no appointment.
Right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We go forward. Thank you. Okay. Now it's Dougie's turn. Utility vehicle purchase.
Mayor Protem, council members. Before you, as a request for authorization for the city manager to sign a purchase agreement for a utility vehicle for the Public Works Department. This is actually going, the first vehicle going to the Roads Department versus the other ones were for the utilities departments. It's long overdue. And this is a budgeted item. It was in our, it's in our current budget year. And so we're just requesting your authorization to make that purchase.
Okay. Any questions from the council? What exactly are you going to use that for, Doug? I mean, it's a big, heavy-duty truck. Are you going to like, I'm...
The utility boxer sliding in there.
I know that.
I can tell you what that vehicle's used for.
I'm just curious because I know we've got a big dump truck, so you're not going to put dirt in it, so.
Right. Well, we have multiple trailers that we tow.
Okay.
We have a trailer that is ready to haul one of our smaller rollers. In order to tow that, we use a one-ton pickup to tow those kind of vehicles. The other thing that we use for is we're looking at hopefully in the future being able to purchase a tack pot, which is used in our paving operations. That carries hot emulsified asphalt in it. And it helps asphalt and cold packs stick better. So that is 250 gallons. And so you need a larger vehicle to tow that. So instead of trying to use a dump truck, which is overkill, we go with just a very large pickup, which is easier to move around, costs less to operate, but yet can still pull the bigger trailers.
Okay, so it's basically to pull the equipment and stuff around the job sites and stuff. I was just curious. Any comments from the public? Okay, with that being said, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign purchase order and supporting documents for the procurement of one truck for the Public Works Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next question, next thing on the agenda, SB 1 project list. And there's also from Doug.
I'll get my iPad to catch up. Mayor Protem, council, before you is a mandatory requirement for SB 1 funds that the local jurisdiction body approves the spending of those funds and the allocating of those funds. So this is a formality that we need to complete in order to file for our SB 1 allotment for the upcoming 1920 year. We get a, it just creeped up a little bit from the '79 we got in 1819 to, well, the numbers kind of jump around because they're not firm yet, but we're looking probably around $84,000 is going to be our SB 1 allotment for this upcoming year. Those funds were, last year's funds were dedicated to the Second Street Project. We're going to be rolling those funds forward to the 1920 year as well as taking the 1920 allotment for the Second Street Project. That project has grown substantially from what I originally looked at. And total build-out on that right now, to do it completely as a complete street project, Mireia will know what I'm talking about, it's complete, I mean, good sidewalks and everything is all included in that, is going to be up in the $400,000 range to do between Main Street and Park Street. So we're trying to figure out, we're probably going to be doing it in phases. The curb gutter and sidewalk needs to be replaced, the biggest part as well as the roadway. Starting out is just trying to do an overlay, just a real brief history here. When I first looked at it as an SB 1 project, I was just going to go in and try to do a quick overlay just to make the road better. And then we got looking at, well, how much is that going to really cost and what's all involved? And we got looking at no curb, no gutters on half of it and all these other things. Sometime, if you want to have some time, take a nap, I can explain to you about vertical curves and how all those work because we don't have one on that road. So to make a very long story short, I got our city engineer involved. We really took a look at it to make it like the rest of Main Street, which we're trying to stay homogenous. And so in order to bring it up to, so that it looks like what we have on our Main Street coming down to our park, that's where the cost escalation came. Because then that cost includes new tree wells and also includes the new street lights. So it's an all-inclusive project. So what I'm asking you to approve now is to put this money into Second Street and we're going to have to probably phase that. So this money will be probably going to curb gutter and sidewalk as the first phase. And then after we get that installed, then we'll have to figure out if we want to use other general fund monies or how we're going to offset that down the road to get a, you know, to come in and do the street as well. So we're looking at all kinds of options. Some of us are going to be coming, definitely going to be coming back to council. What I'm just really asking for tonight, I guess I'm kind of long-winded and I apologize, is just for your approval that we delegate those funds towards the Second Street Project. That's what I'm asking for. Now that got everybody totally confused. I'll entertain. Any questions?
Anybody from the council have questions?
Well, just one of the things, it's not such a big deal now that, what was it, Proposition 6 didn't pass and all that stuff. But I know that the APC and everybody that's involved with road construction, then with this SB 1 money coming out, they want that, you know, shovel ready, let's get it done. We want to make sure people see the results of their, you know, the money that they're paying in. And, I mean, I don't think that's a big deal here when you're talking about $400,000 project and you're only getting like, you know, like what, 160 so far?
170 so far.
Yeah.
Correct.
So it would be better to do something of value than trying to throw it at some kind of an overlay that's only going to last for a short period of time or won't be very significant. But I think that the danger of overturning SB 1 is not so onerous now that you need to worry about getting it done in the same year and putting up posters that say, "Yeah, this is SB 1."
Yeah, we need, it's such a focal point, Second Street with the Carnegie Library down at the street. And so it really needs to match with Third Street, at least what Third Street has with the trees and...
It would be nice.
Yeah, because it's going, and that's all done, it would be a main focal point down there in Library Park.
So are we talking about widening the sidewalks at all or are we talking, because originally you said something matching Main Street and we widen the sidewalks?
Correct. Well, have you noticed that the new sidewalk does come around the corner? So I would say, if there is any widening, it's going to be minimal because of the street width. If we want to retain our parallel parking while we have angular parking for part of it too. So that's going to include some, you know, getting the parking straightened around on that. But to answer your question, George, to the best of my recollection is though, they're not going to be eight foot, we're not widening them out to the eight-foot sidewalks like what we got on Main Street. We just don't have the real estate to do that. We're going to make them as wide as we can, but yet still keep our street functional.
And are we, you know, you said that we're going to down the road somewhere, change out the lights to match like Main Street and all that. Are we going to put those up for like people to donate kind of thing and stuff like?
Yes.
Yes. Well, what we would have to do with this project is we would have to run all of the underground, you know, conduits for the electrical and get the electrical all installed. We would have to put in the pedestals for the light because those are poured within the sidewalk. But then we could safely cap those and then as we, you know, as the funds come in and we can get... come in and we can get the lights purchased, you know, then we could do that.
I would assume you would also run the water and stuff like?
Yes, irrigation would also be ran.
Or they could be purchased and then paid back as, as we have, so that they're done, and then be paid back as families dedicated to their, to their, you know.
Right. Okay. Any other questions from the council? I think I've already opened it to public, so I'm looking for a motion.
Move to adopt the proposed resolution approving the city of Lakeport SB one project list for fiscal year 2019-20 and direct staff to submit to California Transportation Commission.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council, it's approved. Thank you. Okay, last thing on the agenda is city council communications. Margaret, do you have anything you would like to speak about?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
David? Are you tired of talking?
I'm done. Thank you.
Nick, do you got something?
No, no report.
Okay. Chief?
Yeah, I'll just add, it wasn't really in, in my report on the stats, but I wanted to say that REMF, our insurance pool, did a good job in putting on a police chief and management training last week that Jason and I intended, and so I just wanted to make you aware of that, that it's one of the better ones that I've been to as far as the information that REMF put together and brought to us. Not only that, but they saw the advice from, from us as far as what we thought should be on there, and there was a lot of the de-escalation and use of force, mal health issues, homeless issues, all that kind of critical stuff that we really need, so I just wanted to let you know that I appreciated REMF's efforts in trying to keep the police chiefs and the police management really in the loop on the best information that's out there.
Did you do your active shooting training already?
Yeah, we did actually do that, and it went very well. I think we, we ended up training 55 more peace officers from around the lake and also some from Mendocino County. So, it went very well, and at this point, I think we got close to 120 officers through the National Standard Active Shooter Training, which is probably close to, it's 100% of my staff, it's probably close to 85, 90% of the rest of the officers around the county. So, it was, it was very good. Thanks for the reminder.
Good.
Yes, just really quickly, we have our second public outreach meeting coming up this Thursday for our Prop 68 Parklands Grant upcoming, that's due in October or something, for the development of a new lakefront park there. It builds on our first community meeting, but certainly if you missed that one, you can certainly attend this one without missing a beat. The main thing is kind of going over all the amenities that we kind of brainstormed last time, and kind of try to develop a prioritized list, and then ultimately that will build into a third community meeting, actually looking and reviewing some potential concept plans for the lakefront park. So, that's this Thursday here in the city council chambers, 5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you. Kelly?
No report.
Mr. Parlet?
Well, I would probably be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that there is like a nationwide, very serious problem, not unlike what we're having with police forces, because of the horrible job of referees and umpires that are being abused constantly by the public and unsportsmanlike conduct, and their, the average life expectancy of a new referee, out of 10 referees, only two remain after the first two years, 'cause eight of them are leaving because of the constant badgering and abuse and unsportsmanlike conduct in the current state of affairs, and 85% of the current officials said they would quit if sportsmanship got any worse, which it is getting worse. And so, that is why I was, we had like 10 games around the county, and we only had like 16 officials. Looked like football season next year, we're gonna be starting with seven, and we need 15, so this is gonna be affecting everybody in the nation, and it looks like in the not-too-distant future, prep sports may be nonexistent, because we won't be able to get umpires because of the abuse and unsportsmanlike conduct, and the young kids do not wanna get involved. It's kind of like police force, because there's so much, so many issues, and then there's, on the internet, people are being beaten up by coaches, and then they post it all over, and the kids are going, "Hey, not my lifetime, I'm not gonna referee." So, anyway, I will be back here next week with my umpire's jersey on again. Hopefully I will be here on time. I have another game here at Quilic High School, but it is a very, very serious problem, and ultimately, there's gonna be one umpire or referee doing games, and eventually there won't be any, because nobody wants to get into it, because people don't understand that this is about the development, the growth of, you know, student athletes and future citizens, not a life-and-death struggle, and the abuse that they hand out is just unbelievable, and I'm the head of the association, and I came home from a meeting last night, and my wife asked me how it was, and I said, "So very depressing," and it's not just that, it's all over the place, and so I will be back in my blues next week, because I'm doing what I can. We needed 20 officials, we only had 17, we had three games with one official, and you can bet that those guys that were alone were getting lambasted by the fans. I heard it all night tonight from the winning team, so imagine what they say from the losing team. So, we're in a serious impasse, and it does not look good for the future of referees, so we're looking for them in all sports, particularly football. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Turner?
Just wanted to encourage people to join us at the Senior Center Chili Cook-Off on Saturday, April 27th.
Councilmember Matina?
No reports, Mike.
Basically, April 24th is legislative days of people have nothing they wanna do, but go down and look at the, how laws are made and stuff like that. Very interesting. Me and the wife went down last week, 'cause she had some bills that she was interested in, and it's quite amazing how many people show up and what they say, and it's like they go from one policy committee to approve, and then it goes to another policy committee to approve, and there goes, it just goes through all these different things to go through, and so it's, it's interesting. But other than that, April 24th legislative days, and also Blue Gene Day. Yeah, Denim Day. So, with that, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Ken?
I've done that before.
That's the problem, is it's, she comes back.
No, I'm gonna put in my office for her.
We're returning from closed session with no reportable action. Can we please have the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Ruggenberg?
Present.
And Mayor Barnes?
You're welcome.
Can I get our Coast Guard representatives to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose will we live, and justice for all.
Thank you. Acceptance of the agenda. Are there any urgency items?
There are not.
Okay.
I want to make a motion to accept the agenda.
Say it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Ordinances. Leave the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per government code. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of April 16, 2019. Approve the warrant register of April 30, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the Mendocino Complex Fire. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Approve event application 2019-003 with staff recommendations for the 2019 Rhythm and Brews Event. Approve the Lakeport Criterion Application and Agreement between the City of Lakeport and Main Street Elite Cycling, and require event staff to continue to meet with city staff to ensure that all concerns and requirements are met prior to the event. Approve event application 2019-014 with staff recommendations for the 2019 Cardboard and Duct Tape Regatta. Approve event application 2019-016 with staff recommendations for the 2019 Memorial Day Parade. Adopt the proposed resolution adopting a records retention schedule and authorize destruction of certain city records and rescinding resolution number 2698, 2019. Receive and file the draft minutes of the regular meeting of April 17, 2019, as the Measuresy Advisory Committee. Approve amendment number three to the agreement for services between the City of Lakeport and Margaret Silbera. Anyone on council, like?
Can you read that statement?
Oh, right, yes, thank you. Sorry, this goes with consent item L. Before we move on to taking action on the consent calendar, I'd like to publicly announce that per government code 54953C3, requires the city council to orally report a summary of any council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers. Accordingly, before the city council this evening, as part of agenda item 4.L, is a recommendation to approve an amendment to the city manager's contract. The amendment provides for a 6.5% salary increase. I read it. Would anybody like to, would any of the council like to pull any of the items on the consent agenda?
No.
Anyone from the public? Okay. Bring it back to council. May I move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Up next is the public input portion. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject within the authority of the city council, provided the subject is not already on tonight's agenda. Do we have any?
I don't see any.
No public comments. Okay. Would anybody like to make a public comment? There's a lot of people out there, but not a lot of comments. Okay. Now, I would like to ask Brad.
All right, I'm gonna come up here. Casey, you wanna come in?
Well, first, I appreciate the council recognizing Officer DeBolt tonight. It's important also that we keep in mind and continue to get the word out to try to reduce intoxicated driving in our community, because the danger and statistics are staggering around this country with drunk driving. About 10,000 people a year are killed in the United States in DUI crashes. That's one every, about every 50 minutes and about 27 per day. Additionally, the average drunk driver will drive intoxicated about 80 times before their first year. Another staggering statistic is only about 1% of intoxicated drivers on the road are ever actually caught, and there's probably estimated to be about 300,000 per day in the United States. Sorry, can you hear me better? As you may be aware, on April 24th, Officer DeBolt was honored by Mothers Against Drunk Driving at their Northern California Awards Ceremony in Rockland. He was honored for making 45 out of our department's total 95 DUI arrests in 2018. However, in an effort to keep our streets safe from intoxicated drivers, Officer DeBolt went considerably further than just making arrests. He created public outreach materials, spoke on the radio, public radio, and led other officers in drunk-driving saturation patrols and other special enforcement operations. And that was all in an effort to keep our city safe and try to reduce and eliminate drunk driving. We're confident that his work, as well as the work of the other officers in making the 50 additional arrests, has changed behavior and kept our streets safer and prevented some acts of drunk driving, and we're confident that he has, that work has saved lives as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Fantastic work. Thank you for everything you're doing out there. We have, we have this here for you.
So, next we have a proclamation designating May 12th through 18th.
This is 2018. Should be 2019.
We're in 2019, so, but that week could have it too. And it's Police Week, and we're publicly saluting the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. So, should we have all of the officers come to the phone? Is that what we do now? Come on up, officers.
Mr. Sheriff?
The sheriff?
I guess we're calling the sheriff.
So, I've been waiting to do this one, actually. This is my first proclamation. I'm happy about it, hey. Gotta have goals. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Lakeport to recognize National Police Week 2019 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers studying in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lakeport Police Department. And whereas there have been 58,627 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2016, resulting in approximately 16,677 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 371 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 158 officers killed in 2018 and 213 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2019, and whereas the candlelight vigils part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12 through 18. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers. in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. And US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Lakeport hereby designates May 12 through 18, 2019 Police Week. In the City of Lakeport and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lakeport to be affixed this 7th day of May, 2019.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
I'll just stay here because I have another one. Proclamation declaring May 18 through May 24, 2019 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Come on up. So this is my second proclamation.
This is your one.
City of Lakeport, State of California Proclamation designates the week of May 18 through May 24, 2019 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Whereas in 2017, 658 people died in boating-related accidents in the United States. 449 of these fatalities were due to drowning. And 370 of these boaters would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. And whereas contributing factors in fatal accidents were operator inattention, inexperience, excessive speed, and machine failure, use of alcohol was the leading contributing factor at 15 percent. And whereas, where instruction was known, 81 percent of deaths occurred on boats where the operator did not receive boating safety instructions. And only 14 percent of deaths occurred on vessels where the operator had received an approved boating safety education certificate. And whereas approved boating safety classes continue to be offered by Flotilla 88 to assist boaters in obtaining a boater's card to be in compliance with State Bill 941 effective January 1, 2018, which prohibits the operation of motorized vessels without a valid boater's card in California. And whereas Flotilla 88 of Lake County will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by offering boating classes, free vessel examinations, promote safe boating, and encourage the wearing of life jackets by everyone. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Lakeport does hereby designate the week of May 18 through May 24, 2019 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County and urges all users of Clear Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Blue Lakes, and Indian Valley Reservoir to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating. Attend a safe boating course, exercise safe boating practices, and adopt the slogan of "Wear It." I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lakeport to be affixed this 7th day of May, 2019.
If you all would like to say anything?
We just want to thank the city for recognizing National Safe Boating Week. And we encourage everyone to enjoy our lake out here, our lakes. But we want you to come back the following weekend. So wear your life jacket, don't boat under the influence, everything should be good. And take one of our boating safety classes. So we appreciate the city recognizing National Safe Boating Week. Thank you. Uh, yeah, you can find us on the internet. Just Google Lake County Flotilla.
Lake County Flotilla.
That's us.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we now have a presentation from Herman. From PG&E?
All right. Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Awesome, awesome. It's, I'm really honored to be here this evening. On behalf of PG&E, thank you for the opportunity to come and provide some information on the very important work that we've been doing since 2018, but also we're going to continue to do in 2019. But this is more of a informal presentation. And at any time during the actual presentation, please feel free to stop me if you need some clarification or if you have any specific questions to what we're going through. And before I begin, I just want to thank Mrs. Silbera for the opportunity and for reaching out because this is something that we, in my position, it's really important for us to be doing at this point. We're already in wildfire season technically, but it's good to be having these types of conversations now. So the Community Wildfire Safety Program, and for the community members, we do have extra slides packets here if you want to follow with us. But Doug's going to be helping me with the clicker stuff. So thank you very much, Doug. We are going to move on to Slide Number Two. And basically, there's a few things that we've already been doing that you're well aware of. And there's, the first real-time monitoring and intelligence is more things that we've already been doing and things that we are enhancing and doing on top of the routine work that has already started. And the new and enhanced safety measures have been applied in 2018 and will continue to be applied in the next five years. And then system hardening and resiliency is really focused on the long-term goals that PG&E is investing, and they've already invested over $15 billion in system hardening and resiliency. But in that section, we'll cover a lot of the stronger and more resilient poles that we've been going in, some undergrounding beta projects that we've done. But if you flip to the page number three, I think one of the most important reasons why we're here today is because, and I've heard some of the constituents talk about the Public Safety Power Shut-Off, also known as PSS, or proactively shutting off the power in high fire threat areas. If you look at the map, this is, we took this from the CPUC website. Anyone has access to that, and you can actually look up your address to see if you live in any area that is in a Tier Two or Tier Three. But basically, what this is telling the citizens of Lakeport is that you are surrounded by Tier Two areas, and you do have a few Tier Three areas that are not in this map. And the questions that we get during all of these presentations is, "Will I be shut off during a public safety power shut-off?" And since we've actually done it one time here in Lake County and almost a second time, how many people in the room were actually impacted by that first public safety power shut-off that happened in October? I'm not sure if Martin was. So there was a few, and a lot, so last year, and I'm kind of getting ahead of myself, but last year, the scope was limited. It was actually up to 70,000 volts transmission lines and lower. This year, one of the most significant changes that has happened between PG&E, Public Utilities, and the state is that we put everything on the board. So you're looking at up to 500,000 volt transmission lines, meaning that if we were to shut off one of those transmission lines, it can pretty much de-energize our entire service area, which is pretty significant. And that is a worst-case scenario, but we're telling everyone to develop their plan going off a worst-case scenario. So moving on to the real-time monitoring, and I'm going to do this kind of quick because I know Ms. Silbera said it was about a 15-minute presentation, and then we'll open it up to questions. And I'm going to focus more on the public safety power shut-off. But something that PG&E did last year, and they started to do this at the end of 2017, was they went around to SDG&E, New Zealand, Australia, a lot of the engineers and the higher-up vice presidents, which we actually no longer have anymore because, never mind, I don't want to get into chapter 11. But a lot of people went around and researched what are other areas that are experiencing similar weather patterns and significant wildfires doing to prevent these and to make their communities more resilient. So one of the things that PG&E did was they created the Wild Safety Operations Center, which is open 24 hours, 7 days a week during wildfire season. And it's open sometimes during the off-season, like for floods or big storms that come in. The other thing that Lake County should know is that we're also installing new weather systems, over 1,300 throughout our entire service area. And Lake County has already gotten four new weather systems that are located mostly in the Middletown area, but there's one in Kelsey though, as well as Clear Lake. But they're looking to double down this year on four more weather stations in the area. And what that basically does is it gives you a lot more accurate weather information that we can see from our headquarters in San Francisco. The other thing that they're doing, and I'm sad to report, we've only done one in Lake County, but we've been installing high-definition cameras, which gives us access to live feeds that everybody in this room actually has. The opportunity of accessing both of those, the weather stations and the high-definition cameras on the website, so it'll be low in numbers. But again, that is, they're looking at actually installing 100 of those this year throughout our service area. Last year, we only installed nine new ones. So that's going to be a significant increase. The other thing that we have going on Slide Number Five, which I believe it doesn't really impact the City of Lakeport within your city limits, but last year, we started with the enhanced vegetation management. And this is work that's being done on top of our routine work, which some of the people in unincorporated areas of Lakeport and Tier Two and other Tier Three areas of Lake County have experienced. But what we're doing is we're going around inspecting and making sure that the trees or vegetation around our lines are at least four feet with the best practice suggestion of trimming it up to 12 feet away so then it allows time for the vegetation to grow back. And then, moving on to what has, you may have, this has gone through Lake County already. Luckily, I haven't heard from the City Council or your city manager, which is a good thing. But basically, what happened in early, earlier 2019 was we, or actually December 2018, we started the Wildfire Safety Inspections Program, which went around and pretty much blitzed all our Tier Two and Tier Three transmission and distribution lines. And we looked at the structure, we looked at the lines, we looked at the arms, and made sure that if there was anything that we needed to fix, that we either fixed it immediately, or if it's something that needs to just be reported and then it's not an emergency, it's on our list to look at over the next few months and possibly years. But this was a very important program. And if you move to the next slide, you'll see that we actually did this, we were able to accomplish this through a variety of ways. One was the use of drones was really instrumental in this because they have high-definition cameras that allowed us to inspect the lines without having actual people go up the lines and inspect the poles, I mean. And some of the bigger, when we hear from city council or cities or counties, it's because people are complaining about either helicopters or drones flying in the air. So I'm glad to report that we didn't have any reports from the City of Lakeport and that this has already, it's most likely going to be completed by June. If we move on to the Electric System Maintenance and Repairs, this is a big one because this happened, this has happened a few times in Sonoma County. Again, I forgot to say my name. My name's Herman Hernandez, and I'm the Public Affairs Representative for Sonoma and Lake Counties. Sonoma County has had some emergency fixes that we've identified, where our team went in there and immediately either fixed a transmission pole, some of the lines or some of the arms that were damaged, or just some of the things, simple fixes that we're finding is putting a high-voltage sign where there's high-voltage lines that it's missing something like that. It's as simple as a sign like that. The other thing to note on this, because a lot of people bring up undergrounding, is we did do a beta project in West Sonoma County, and they undergrounded about a half a mile of distribution line. And it was about 3,000 feet, took nine months, and it cost about $1.4 million. A lot of people are always talking about undergrounding. And right now, PG&E is really putting everything on the table because we got to figure out ways to address these significant wildfires that we're experiencing. So if we move on to Number Nine, I'm sorry, this is kind of a, this is like a 15...
You can slow down, it's okay.
Okay, okay, cool.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I knew I had 15 minutes, and I wanted to try and save time for questions. So one of the things we have been doing in Lake County, especially in Tier Three areas, is we've been replacing the electric line with what they call tree line, or on here you'll see resilient poles and covered power lines. That is focused on the 7,100 line miles of the Tier Three areas. So there have been, that work has happened here in Lake County, not specifically in Lakeport. The other thing you may have heard of in the news, because it's happening in Angwin and Napa County, it's one of the beta projects for the new resilience zones, which basically means we're bringing in, they're reconfiguring the grids to be able to, like, for example, power the city council, power the police station, power the fire station, and maybe the grocery store in one small area in the case of a public safety power shut-off. And that's what we mean by new resilient zones. The other thing is, that is very important to note, is that if you're familiar with the reclosing technology, that is a big cause of wildfires in the past, and which is one of the reasons why PG&E actually shuts them off during the wildfire season. A recloser is basically what happens in the wintertime when your power goes off for a couple seconds, and then it turns back on, and that's because the recloser tested the entire line to make sure that there was no damage to the line, that power can continue, can continue to be served safely. But this year, they're actually installing another 300 reclosers that we will be able to manage remotely, which is actually really important to the, bringing the power back on after we shut off the power because last year, you may have heard from your neighbors, they were, most of Lake County was back on within 24 hours that was turned off, but the longest areas took about 36 hours. And then, we are now getting into the best part, and I think the most important part, one that will definitely impact Lakeport. And I think one of the most important things that, and I could provide a model of what the City of Santa Rosa has been sharing with their cities in Sonoma County on how to build a plan in the case of a public safety power shut-off. But people are always asking, "What are you looking for when you're trying to shut the power off or thinking about shutting the power off?" So if you go back to October 2018, when we did shut the power off for about 12,000 customers in Lake County, our team was looking at, of course, a red flag warning, but it can't just be a red flag warning from the National Weather Service. It also includes humidity levels that are below 20 percent, constant winds that are forecasted of 25 miles per hour or more, and then gusts of wind up to 45 miles per hour. And then I mentioned those weather stations and the HD videos. That's going to help us with the, to identify condition of dry fuel. And then, of course, there's a lot of PG&E employees and supervisors and people boots-on-the-ground who give us information from the ground zero. So there really is five different variables that are all being looked at carefully at the W-SOC, Wildfire Safety Operations Center. We'll skip Slide Number 12 because that just gives you an overview of the public safety power shut-off. Or, I mean, sorry, the CPUC Fire Threat Map. But one of the challenges, and I'm really happy to see Sheriff Martin here, because one of the biggest challenges during the first time that we shut this power off was really the communication lines with local elected, local emergency staff as well as law enforcement and public safety, like the fire department. And I think because of Sheriff Martin's leadership and other people who we were working with at the county, the second time around that we were getting ready for a public safety power shut-off, we were able to button it up a lot more. And of course, there's always room for improvement. But from the first time to the second time, I thought that the communication was a lot better. So for the public, what we're doing is PG&E's goal, and we didn't meet this goal last year, and I'm being... and I'm being honest with you. Our goal is to find, is to see the weather system and then call a potential PSPS within forty-eight hours of an event actually occurring. And this is just to warn our customers, but also warn the city and the county that this may be happening in your community. And then, again, twenty-four hours notice in advance to let them know that this is definitely going to happen. And then, just before we shut the power off, we once again do either a robo-call, or you'll get an email, or, or you, well, I would email the city manager, but you'll also get text messages or potential nixels, but we know that the county is taxed on how much times they can use the nixels. So we're trying to find other solutions to be able to inform the community. Mr. Mayor?
I didn't know that, I didn't know we were taxed on how many times.
No, that's, not taxed is probably the wrong word, but it's like, because you use it so much, there is a fee. And if you overuse it, you have to pay more to use the service. Am I getting that right, Sheriff Martin?
It's a, but, it's way off topic for this to, just to explain why we're not using nixle as much as we used to. The phone companies are now charging a fraction of a cent fee for any MMS or SMS messages that they sent out. The sheriff's office sent out nearly seven million messages last year because of all the disasters. So we got notified by the company, they're going to be passing through those fees on our contract, but they're getting from the cell phone companies. The CPUC has been notified of it, hopefully it'll be taken care of. But for something like this, I would say that nixle would be very appropriate. We're saving our messages for these types of events.
Okay, cool, thank you. So to give you context, both of the PSPS calls we had last year were given within a thirty-six hour period, so it's a little under, it's twelve hours under our forty-eight hour goal. But then, as soon as we locked those in, those thirty-six hour or forty-eight hour warnings, we then, just to give you some background information, we set up calls with all officials who are, emergency officials who are responsible for their areas, where we do a conference call at seven in the morning, twelve PM, and five PM, just to stay in continuous contact to make sure everybody knows what is going down and how everybody, and what the odds are of it actually occurring. And then, we shut it off one time, and that time, when we told the county administrator's office that we were going to be shutting the power off at about five PM on Sunday evening, the power didn't actually start going off in Lake County until eight. So there is a buffer zone between, I don't want to say that, I don't want to say that as soon as we tell you it's going to be shut off, because I don't actually know, but just based on the one time we did it, you had up to three more hours to kind of plan and move your resources accordingly. So, again, your constituents would be getting calls and emails and text messages, depending on how they signed up for our, for our updates from PG&E. But we'd also be working with the sheriff's office as well as your city manager to help with, with providing that information. Now, during the public safety outage, we have to wait till the weather system goes through, which is usually high winds and low humidity levels. And then, our team and crews can start inspecting every inch of every line to make sure that none of the lines are actually damaged, which is why it takes a lot longer to re-energize in the summertime than it does in the wintertime. That's a big question that we get a lot. So if you move on to the next slide, it kind of walks you through how we restore the power. So, weather's all clear, our team inspects, patrols, we'll have drones in certain areas if we have the staff, and then we'll also have helicopters flying the lines. In the occurrence that happened in October, we did have about, I believe it was twenty-three or twenty-six, don't quote me on that, but it was in that vicinity of damage to our infrastructure that we saw during the October public safety power shut-off. Here's the problem, we cannot tell you if that was started a fire or not, but we know that it damaged our equipment, which if it was on, there could have been sparks, so it's all like, it could have happened. So we're not saying this is going to prevent fires, but we're saying it's going to keep your community safer, if that makes any sense at all. Now, everybody gets powered back on in certain sections, and then we also are notifying customers as their power is getting back on. And all your customers, if they do have a phone that is not, that still has power, they can access our outage map website to give them up-to-date information on whether power will be coming back on, just like a winter storm. I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions.
Herman, I really want to thank you for this presentation, it's great. I just have a question on the map for Lakeport, to clarify. None of the city limits is in Tier Two or Three, correct?
Very small slivers are, actually.
Even yet, but we do have transmission lines that would create some outages because that go out to Tier Two and Three.
Correct.
Correct. But it's very limited, the amount of, so would it be, so you say there's going to be more outages than last time?
There will be more, most likely, in a worst-case scenario, there would be a lot more people without power. But here's another upgrade we made from this year to last, from last year to this year, and that is there's going to be actual event-specific maps. So last year, we didn't have that for customers, so when they would log in, they'd just look up their Tier Two or Tier Three website and put in their address, and it would just tell them if they lived in a Tier Two or Tier Three. This year, if you live in Lakeport and you're fed by a certain transmission line or distribution line that's going to be potentially shut off, you would actually know through this interactive map that's being created for specific events. So I can't tell you specifically how many people...
I appreciate it, that's...
That's a huge, that's a huge step. Technology these days, you know, you've got to take advantage of it.
Very helpful here. Is, do you know, is there any kind of program for generators or anything that PG&E knows of to help, especially small businesses, keep their, you know, their product safe for that time? Do you know of any?
Not only small businesses, I mean, like, for people who have medical needs.
Or medical needs, yes.
You know, like, people that are living out in the country and they have an oxygen slump or whatever, and they needed to keep going. Does PG&E know about these people and have something that they can do for them?
So we do know about our medically, medically fragile customers, medical baseline customers is what we refer to our customers as, and we're actually in the process of hosting a workshop with the, with Lake County. But last year, the way it worked is that it was a very tedious process, very inefficient process that they're fixing this year, where you will have your city manager, whoever's your emergency person, will send an NDA form to have access to our medically fragile customers. Then you could match them with your customers. But are we specifically doing anything for them in terms of providing generation? The answer is no. But we're trying, like, last year, we were actually reaching out to our medically baseline customers. They, they get the robo-call, but then if they don't answer the robo-call, they get a phone call, they get a second phone call, because we have phone bankers during these situations. And then we had people actually knocking on doors, letting them know their power is going to be going out, and they're going to have to figure out a plan. And that's one of the main things that I think I'm doing here today is to try and get you as our local ambassadors to make sure that people are aware that this could happen. It's not definitely going to happen, but when it does happen, they need to have some sort of plan where they go to their friend's house, their family member's house, or their fam, they call their family member to come and pick them up. But we're not providing generators for businesses or, yet, that I know of.
I was wondering if there's like a program or there's some kind of special...
No, and that's a big challenge, because it's like, that happened last year, and there's, I have, I wish I had a good answer for you, but I honestly don't.
Herman, could you discuss a little bit about the upgrades that PG&E did to the Cal Stoga Power Station regarding generators?
So that's still, it's still in a process, beta process, they're still developing that. But it's basically, my understanding of that beta project is a resiliency zone would be an area where your community can check in and come to, to the cooling station if it's too hot in the summertime. They have access to phone chargers. It would be mostly an area like this, where you have the city council, the city council chambers, the chief of police, or, sorry, the police station, and grocery stores or somewhere where there's access to food and things, so, because a lot of people lose their food during these outages. And that's right now in beta, and hopefully it'll be done by the end of this fire season. So if it does happen, we can see if it's a good project to install in other areas of our service area.
Thank you. Has there been any rescheduling for the tabletop exercises for emergency personnel?
Okay, so, yes, there has been. So we actually had a planned tabletop exercise here in Lake County. I think it was scheduled for last week or two weeks ago, but what happened was, and I gave you some of the new flyers, CalOES has joined the three biggest public utility companies in California, and they wanted to be more proactive and engage in the outreach and partner up with us to do these workshops. And the reason why we halted the workshop here in Lake County was because CalOES wanted us to do a different approach in working with cities and counties, where we're teaching you, not me, but someone's teaching you how to develop a plan, as opposed to the tabletop was going to be more like going through a scenario, assuming you had already a plan developed. So that's the only difference, and unfortunately, it's holding up our opportunity to start having these interactive exercises and doing outreach to the whole community.
Do you have a timeline and when you'll be moving forward with that?
I'm hoping before June, to be honest with you. Yeah, I don't have an actual timeline. I know they, they cut us off in the, towards the end of April, so...
Thank you.
We had to cancel ours for Sonoma County, which is in two days, so I'm hoping we get them back up towards the end of May and early June.
Great. So you talked about piloting resiliency zones, and I think it's great that you put an emphasis on the fact that during an outage, people lose all their food. And if you take a situation like, say, Fort Bragg or Wall, all of them are isolated, and they're seven, you know, fifty miles from Willets, and maybe they have the same problem in Willets. And then, the two or three grocery stores over there, they are out for a long time, which doesn't take very long for all the ice cream, frozen food, and stuff like that to go south. And they, most of them don't have the size of equipment that would run a grocery store because it's just so expensive and stuff like that. So those, are those part of the overall shut-off? Because you said you're going up to five hundred million, you know...
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred, excuse me, five hundred thousand. And if those go down and then things come back, I remember an incident, I was refereeing over in Fort Bragg under power lightage from batteries over there, and the town was out for like, a week. And they were having barbecues to get rid of the stuff that was going south, but there was literally like no food that was left that was refrigerated that could be saved because it was such a long outage. But this situation I'm thinking of is, you talked about resiliency zones where you keep the police station and the fire station and city hall, and possibly grocery stores, so that when the power does come back on, people have a place to go to replenish. Because, you know, in most cases, twenty-four hours is not a problem for anybody, but when it goes into forty-eight more and then they can't replenish, and then you're, you're like sequestered in an area where you can't get out because you're surrounded by fires, could be a real issue. So you, are the main lines, like, let's say, Lakeport where you have Safeway, the big area there, would that be like the last place to go, or, you know, the grocery outlet area? Do you have areas where you can, you know, the houses have to get shut down, but we can protect these and they're not a same-fire thing, or is it all for one or all or nothing?
That's an excellent question. So one of the things I forgot to mention was, in October, we shut off about twelve thousand customers. And then, our electrical engineers reconfigured the grid, so then in November, when we almost shut the power off again here, we were only going to shut six thousand people off same scenario. So every time we do it...
You get better.
It gets better, and they reconfigure the grid. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, the thing that concerns me is, well, we had a situation during the Mendocino Complex fire where...
Oh, sorry, that was, that's what I wanted to say. This would never happen if there were fires all around you. It would only happen to make sure that no fire happens. If a fire started during a PSPS, that's another question. That would, that's a big concern of a lot of people. But theoretically, this is to prevent fires from happening in the first place. So this wouldn't be going into action if there was already a live fire around you. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry to cut you off, but that was another part of the answer to your question.
Well, the, one of the incidents that happened, there was really a horrible situation. The Century Market, they have a situation where when they shut the power off, it doesn't just go on automatically, it has to have somebody go in there physically, and then because of the fires, they wouldn't let anybody in there, and they caused, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars worth of damage. And, you know, the milk exploded, and it was in cleanup, it was a horrendous situation because they didn't get to the right people to get in to let them go in, because the fire guys, oh no, you can't go in there, can't go in there. And it cost the insurance companies, which ultimately cost everybody money because it wasn't dealt with in a way that could have prevented huge amounts of losses, because it was like, they're so worried about their safety, but yet it's, you know, a huge pad of a quarter-mile of concrete, no one could get in there to shut the, turn the switch back on. And so everything went south, and they had cleanup crews come from all over California to clean it up, and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars were lost, and all they had to do is flip the switch back on. But they were prevented from going in there by, you know, whoever. And they didn't get a hold of Jim Steele, or they didn't get a hold of Sheriff Martin or whatever, but that's a terrible situation. And anytime those people in that surrounding area are going to be impacted by that, because the store's going to be cut down. So these are all things that, as city leaders and county leaders, that we need to be concerned about, people dealing with out, things like pet food, that's fine, but, you know, perishables, milk, dairy, meats, you know, produce, and things like that, it's gone because it got, you know, got taken out by refrigeration problems. So that's the stuff that scares me, as a grocery store owner, but I see my competitors have a much larger problem than I do, and generators are just out of the question.
So I was understanding, you said that this was the plan, if a fire didn't break out, so a fire breaks out, power's off, evacuate, that's basically what we're looking at. Would we still try to reroute powers to things like City Hall, where we would have an EOS? Or anything like that?
We're playing this scenario game, and I don't want to give you any specifics because I don't know.
Okay.
But what I would say is, if there, we have Sheriff Martin in the house, so I don't know if he wants to answer that question. But for that, for that one, Mr. Mayor, I think, again, this is to prevent a fire from happening. If a fire broke out within those twenty-four hours, there's a possibility we wouldn't shut the power off. But here's, Cal Fire already asked PG&E to shut power off in certain areas that are in danger, that puts their, their team at risk of a live electric line. So I think in that scenario, if we hadn't shut the power off yet, we probably wouldn't shut it off. I don't know.
So, one of the things I know everybody here is looking for, and I would like to hear some answers about, how can we minimize the impact of what the power shut-off is going to have? You know, I think that's time to understand that, after seeing last year, we're not going to minimize the impact. It's going to be horribly confusing, it's going to be a problem for a lot of people. And I think the messaging starts to need to shift now towards what we do to prepare it. Because as Herman said, he says it's not necessarily going to happen. I think it's going to. I mean, I don't, I don't believe that we're going to make it through this season without a public safety power shut-off. So my question then becomes, how long is it going to last? And I hear numbers of up to an entire week, and I hear that the entire county could potentially be impacted by this. So I think it's important that, instead of trying to figure out maybe, you know, what can we do when this happens to make it as easy as possible, let's start preparing for what we're going to do when it does happen. When we talk about grocery stores, I don't know, there's not a good answer for grocery stores. You know, we tried to get them in, we did let people into Century Market a couple days, pretty soon after we got the request, and it might have been too late at that point. But we do have ways to let people in. But individually, rather than waiting for CalOES and the utility companies to get together, I think individually in small, in small communities, we need to start messaging to our people that there are things that you can do to prepare for this. Have non-perishable food items, have a manual can opener, fill up your bathtub with water, get your garage door open or unhooked, if you need to get your garage door open, know how to do that. Get a mobile phone charger so you can keep your mobile phone charged on your, in your car. These are all things that we can do to prepare individually. Know that if this is a county-wide power outage, we do not have sheltering capabilities for everybody in this county. If we are able to stand up some shelters and we're able to get some power generation in there, it is very likely going to be limited to the most fragile population, people with serious health conditions, young children, elderly people. And that might mean that young children and one parent are allowed in to care for that young child, and the other able-bodied parent might be referred out somewhere else. So these are, these are things that we need to start doing now to prepare our constituents. It's too late, I think, in my opinion, to wait when you get that forty-eight hour notification that PG&E gets to you, that, that's too late to prepare. People need to start making these preparations now. If you've got friends at the coast... If you've got friends at the coast, make sure to send them a card.
Yeah.[602.12][602.12](laughing).
Seriously. When it's hot, this is when this is going to happen. This is going to be 100 degrees, red flag conditions, dry miserable weather. This isn't going to happen in spring when it's 68 degrees, 75 degrees outside when you go out and enjoy it. It's going to be hot and miserable. And if you can get out of the area, it might be a good time to get out of the area if you're able to do so. If you're not, you know, reach out for help and we'll see what we can do. But I don't think there's any, there's no answers to be had to, to point us in the direction of what's going to make this an okay event. As far as power generation to certain areas, I'm a resident of Lakeport, that's why I came here, I should have changed clothes because it could have been any color. What I do know is that even, you don't live in a tier-two or tier-three, but those power lines have to go through there to get to you. So if the power's interrupted between you and wherever the hamsters are running on the wheel to make the power, you're not going to have power here. And as far as the technology to route it around to certain areas, maybe to get it to you, I don't know if that's going to be a possibility either. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I would count on the fact that it's not going to be. And let's figure out what we're going to do in the meantime.
Sheriff, will you be putting together, or Dale, that list you talked about, what, how we can get that information out to our community about all the different things you should be looking at to be prepared?
Yes. I went down and recorded some public safety, public service announcements today by Coastal Media, who also has something on our Facebook page, some video messaging. I don't have copyright on any of that.
Right.
So if you take my ideas and you put a pretty face like your mayor has on it, a video message here, you can see it's impressive.
Seriously?
No confidence.
I mean, we could come up with a lot, but it'd be great to have a list that you're putting out so that we could make sure all of our residents have that too.
Yeah, one of the big things when you're dealing with these disasters, this is going to be a disaster. You know, it may not meet right across the definition of a disaster or anything like that because it's to be expected and planned for, but it's going to cause disaster-like conditions. One of the big things is that people come to us as, as the community leaders seeking information, and we can, we have something to tell them. We're not going to fix it. PG&E will fix it, hopefully in less than a week, hopefully in 24 hours like they did last time. But I certainly wouldn't count on it. And if individuals can have an individual readiness plan, it's going to make it easier for everybody else. There are going to be people who don't make those plans for whatever reason, either they can't or they just don't. So the more people that do, it saves those resources to be available for those that don't. So I'm happy to share that information. Like I say, feel free, whatever I put out there is just things that people have told me along the way, some good ideas here and there, like filling your bathtub. The water treatment, I don't know what the water treatment's like in Lakeport, but I know there are water districts within Lake County that will shut off water because they can't run their sewage treatment plants. If they keep the water on, then it's going to continue forcing sewage through them, their systems are going to be overrun and cause all kinds of problems. So that's something else that they-
We do have generators in all of our water sewer, but it's limited to, what, three days at the max that we could probably run that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So little messages like, have water available, have potable water, set aside for your bathtub so you can fill up your toilet so you can flush your toilet and wash your hands and wash dishes, and then have separate drinking water. We're working on some messaging to come up with that. But to me, the most important thing is that we get the message out now, and start, starting now. Don't wait till 48 hours. Last thing I want to close, unless somebody else has something for me, sign up for these notifications either through PG&E, make sure you're on their, their information list, make sure it matches up with what they have. Sign up for Lakeport alerts, sign up for the police department's NICSOL alerts. We generally, when these types of things happen, we try to work together with all of our partners to make sure that we have a united message that goes out. And that includes working with utilities, CalFire, fire departments, local police departments. But if you don't sign up for those messages, it's going to make it difficult to get the information to you.
Thank you.
Just any other questions?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There you go.
There we go.
I didn't even have to present, can I just have Sheriff Martin?
There it is. I do have one question, and it may be a trivial thing. You're getting more and more people that are doing solar panels. And my understanding is the solar panels are just pushing electricity back down their lines, turning their meters backwards or whatever. So when you guys shut off power and you've got these solar panels still working, does that cause some sort of an issue you guys need to deal with?
That's a great question that I don't know the answer to, but I could find out for you.
Because maybe you should put in their bills that they, you know, throw their switch so it doesn't go down the lines. I don't know.
I'm not sure what happens during like, a winter storm if they lose power. So I would assume it'd be the same practice. So if they have to shut a certain knob off with the power goes out, then, but I can get more information on that specific question about solar panels being-
Because if you've got power going down the line in reverse, it still could cause a fire.
Do you have knowledge about a solar panel?
Yes, I do.
Awesome. The solar panel-
(inaudible).
That's what you got right there. What happens when you know about things?
My name is Bill Gabe. I'm a resident of the district, of the Fire District area. I do have knowledge of the solar system because I have one of my own. And there is a law in the state of California and in several other states for that matter that says if PG&E drops the power for any reason, it automatically shuts your solar system off. It cannot recharge the line backwards.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gabe.
Thank you, thank you.
And now we know.
All right. And with that, there, the last slide just talks about all the different things that we've been doing to do outreach. And like Sheriff Martin already said, one of the main reasons why I'm here today is to let you know to have your own personal plan for you and your family and your friends. But one of the greatest things that the city of Lakeport can do is to start letting your constituents know that this is going to happen. We don't know when it'll happen, but if you have a plan and you'll be able to ride out the power shut-off. We're telling people two to five days max. I know there's a lot of rumors out there that say, that have been saying seven days or a week, but that's not the information that we're sharing with people, so I'm not sure where that's coming from. But again, it all depends on the magnitude of the PSPS because this year we're doing a lot more. But again, you have my contact information at the end of the PowerPoint part. If you have any questions or feedback, one of my jobs is to get all that information back to the people who are making these strategies and these decisions. And now we're working with CalOES. So I'm assuming that they are going to be a lot more involved when these types of situations happen. And I'm hoping that at the state level, maybe we can advocate for turning this into a possible emergency. Because if it's not treated like emergency, it makes it a lot harder for people who lose their, their, their stock or their groceries or their food that's in their freezer. So once again, thank you for your time, and I am available at any time. Feel free to reach out to me. I am your liaison to PG&E. Usually I work with the mayor and the city manager, but if you have specific questions, feel free to hit me up or shout me a holiday. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Just one thing that I would like to point out that a lot of people don't know, that almost every insurance company that insures large retailers, they disqualify the first three days of losses during an emergency. So if you have a three-day outage, like in the case of my little store, we lost $32,000 worth of business and we got $1,300 bucks back. So we ended up being out over 30 grand. That is nothing compared to what Jeff and Jackie lost or Century Market. Because if they're out for three days only, they get nothing back from insurance. So don't think that, oh, they have insurance, they have insurance. All those losses are just turned into write-offs. And if you're in a grocery store, chances are you don't need a lot of write-offs. It's a 1% industry, or at least it used to be before minimum wage.
Thank you. Thank you, Herman, for your presentation.
Do you have any public comments?
Oh, do we have any public comment? Public kind of commented throughout? Okay, seeing none. Hold on. Do we have any kind of, like, how-to-prepare-for-dummies checklist? Did you know that we could?
This isn't bad right here, though.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, there is a few websites. CalFire actually has a really good how-to-prepared-for-smart-people, not dummies, for smart people, very smart. PG&E also, we do have a wildfire safety website. Some of it does direct you to CalFire. And CalOES, I actually handed you a new, an off-road to the city manager, but it has another website, that CalOES has a how-to-be-prepared-in-case-of-public-safety-power-shut-off as well. And then I will send, I will forward the city of Santa Rosa's, like, draft of a plan for their city. So you, if you wanted to add that to your, to your city policies or whatever-
Absolutely. We'd love to look at other, we do have some plans put together, but always, always good to look at what other cities are doing that we could add to our plans. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is that your memory stick?
Oh, no, it is not.
Okay.
Actually- Yeah, I was just thinking if we had some kind of simple checklist, we could include with like, the water bill or something?
We will work on that, do a large campaign on that. This is the time of year now, we're getting close to the heat and-
Yeah, one interesting thing, I mean, this, this sheet that's just working with Californians to prepare, one of the biggest problems since I was in the evacuated area throughout and people were trying to come in and out, and it says right on here, time for pets and livestock. That was one of the biggest things that people could not have. But I was privy to a presentation by the Assistant Fire Chief from Bel Air, and this goes way back to a Bel Air fire that was eons ago. And the one thing about this, it says, ensure any backup generators are ready and safely operate. Anybody that's ever picked up their chainsaw after letting it sit for a year, I got news for you, you go out and you need that generator for a power outage, chances are, you won't be able to get it started, especially if you're a gal, because you've got to crank it, crank it, the gasket's all gummed up and everything. So setting a calendar date to have it checked off, like, you know, once a month to start it, right?
I think I'd be just fine.
Yeah. All right, move beyond. Thank you, Becky. Kelly?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, can you hear me? So the, the Lake County Airport Land Use Commission has been in existence since about 2004. This board meets only on an as-needed basis. The, the board is not met for a few years, but the county has come and requested that a board member be appointed. I believe this is a mayoral appointment, so it doesn't need to be by motion of the entire council. They are looking for a member and an alternate. The appointments are for four years, so I believe Councilmember Maitina and Councilmember Turner have the longest terms left. But if, if you did apply, if you did, if someone else took the seat, it would just need to be reappointed to-
I'll take it.
Somebody- I was not nominating you.
All right, Stacy appoints herself. Stacy?
I just thought it was a mayoral appointment.
Well, you know, or Stacy, or a state's mayoral, mayoral appointment. Okay, Stacy is appointed, and Mireia adds her alternate.
Were we doing an alternate on this one?
Yeah.
Unless there's any public comment.
Is there any public comment on the appointments?
So do we need a motion?
No.
The mayor's-
A mayoral appointment.
Just had to suggest a state's mayoral appointment.
This one may not have an alternate, I apologize. I'm not sitting here.
But I'll call you if I can't make the problem.
All right. They are nicely appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. You're appointing yourself. And Kelly, again?
Okay. A few weeks ago, the city council readopted the Lake County Clean Water Program Agreement. And I believe that will be, if it hasn't already, going to the board supervisors and the city of Clear Lake. In anticipation of the adoption of that agreement, staff, there, there needs to be a representative and alternate assigned to the Lake County Clean Water Program Management Council. And so that's what's before you right now, is to appoint a member and an alternate. And I don't believe those have a timeline associated with it.
Do you know when they meet, or?
Four times a year?
I'm not sure if that's-
Mr. Mayor, if you please, I, I would imagine that they're probably going to meet pretty frequently to start off. There's, there's quite a bit of workload on that to get back up to speed on making sure, compliance with all the state orders. But then I'd imagine it would drop off to, you know, bimonthly or, or four times a year, somewhere in that range. But there probably will be several meetings at the beginning.
Wonderful. Well, is there anybody who would like to appoint themselves? You would?
What are you calling up?
He asked first. He asked first this time.
Is there any public comment? We also need an alternate.
No, thank you.
Oh, this one says we need a motion.
Yeah, I believe it's a mayoral appointment.
It says suggested motion.
I, I understand. You can confirm it if you want to.
No, it's a mayoral. There we go.
It's a mayoral appointment as far as I can count.
Yeah. Is there any public comment? Wonderful. So, Mireia, with George as an alternate.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now we are on to Margaret.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we've been working on putting together a bid for remodeling the front counter for city hall so we can have a one-stop, a better way to serve our public for finance, for paying utility bills, and for all the building and, and planning department. When we originally talked about this, of course, about any engineering confirmation of what this would cost, we had set aside $70,000 for the project. When we went out for bid, our city engineer actually had the estimated project of $183 for, for the remodeling that portion of the building. So we, and the first, the only bidder that came in was at 235, 235 with $610. We had planned to do night, to do the building at night because of all the noise and the work with the public and construction here. That brought, that's what increased the rate quite a bit is by doing it with a night, night construction. The contractor was able to bring the cost down about $47,750 by, by mostly the night crews, the things they have to do, and then the extra supervision during the night hours. He also built a, is going to do a, build a wall in the, temporary wall in front of that area so that it will be, bring down the noise and less public, public wouldn't be seeing all the mess going on and all the noise going on. It really helped. They're going to take their saws and everything and put them in the alley as they're doing the work. So the loud stuff, they're going to try to, as much as possible, take it out of city hall while they do, do the work. Of course, there's still going to be the hammering and the, and some saws in here, but as much as possible, they're going to try to work on the noise. We did, so it's partially budgeted, not the whole thing. What the finance director and I have discussed is that we, we're sure that there's going to be more than that amount left in this year's budget. There's quite a bit of savings that we're, we're going to have in the 2018, 19 budget that would more than cover the difference without going into reserves to, to do the project if the council wanted to move forward on this project. So, any questions?
When you say they're going to do it at night, are you saying they're going to work all, all through the night? the night?
They were going, we were trying to...
Do a night operation, not a day operation, save the money.
Because we're still gonna be working here while they're, while they're doing the reconstruction, but we could save quite a bit of money by going with the daytime. So, that's where we saved the 47, most of that money was by changing the operation to a daytime operation.
So, they're gonna be doing it during the...
Right, right. So, to get that savings in, in that project.
So, the, one of the things, when I first heard about this, and I bring this up because of the fact that a lot of times, engineers or purchasing agents don't talk to the people that are actually doing the work. Like, the example that I use, they bought trucks down in, for Fleming Foods, and they didn't incorporate the drivers, and they bought these great trucks, and they were gonna save gas and save all this stuff, and then when the drivers got it, they were never asked, and then they drove up over the grade, and it wouldn't pull the grade, and so they were absolutely worthless to do the job they were supposed to do. The point I'm making is, when all of this goes on, it's not just engineers, it's the people that are working in the office get to talk about, you know, the efficiencies that they would have in there and how it would work for them before we, you know, spend $180,000 or whatever it is, and then the people in there go, this is just not gonna work for me, because this is just messed up, because the engineer did it and they didn't talk to us in the office. I always worry about the people that are working in it might be involved in the process.
We started this with working with the staff that's gonna be, that's where our first, we brought the staff in, that was gonna be affected by this, and how they saw, how they could serve the public better, and then we worked from there on, and then worked the project from that point, yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor, too, also on the phasing of the actual physical construction, we've given a lot of consideration, too, as to how city operations will continue to function throughout there, you know, we'll be utilizing this front conference room for a lot, you know, when they're physically demolishing walls in the back area, where you won't be able to get, you know, to building or community development services. We've got, the way that it's phased out will make sure that there's an area for all operations to continue. I think the same with finance, when their wall is not, you know, the normal area where folks come to pay their bill, we have the window on the backside that we'll have to temporarily use when that is there. So, we've given a lot of consideration now, operations will continue to work during the construction as well.
Any timeline at all on phases and completion dates and how long...
Well, they're ready to go as soon as we give them the grid line.
I mean, the length of time is...
They're talking four weeks, I mean, they come in and get it done, at least all the major stuff that's gonna be impacting, you know, business.
That's all.
They're talking about a pretty short timeframe to get it done.
So, you're saying as soon as this is approved, then they'll just start working on it next day?
Well, no, I don't know about next day, I mean, I haven't talked to them directly at the city engineer house, but they're ready to go as soon as we get the approval, so it could be a couple of weeks or whatever before they're able to start, but, because of scheduling, they'll have to make sure that we can get in and do it, but, yeah, they said it's actually a short project, shouldn't be too much time.
Anything else from council? Any public comment?
Yes, please.
Absolutely, come on up, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Froyo. Did I hear that there was one bid?
Yes, there was one bid.
We couldn't get anybody else to bid this project?
We did all the advertising.
When we had the walkthrough, we were excited, because we had about seven contractors, but then, when the bids came in, we only had one bid.
One bid's hard to swallow, that really bothers me. One more quick comment, it's hard for me to think that we would go forward with this project when we have a six-foot cyclone fence out there between the park and the water, and it seems like we have our priorities backwards.
That's kind of apples and oranges, that's a complete different...
No, I understand, I do understand, but it, public perception is, is we've got something that we can't use, we're gonna do something that we don't have an immediate need, we could continue to function the way this building exists. That's hard to tell about this project.
Thank you.
I don't think it would really make sense to put all of our projects on hold because of one, of, you know, projects that's delayed because of the feds and, you know, working with them. It's important to move forward with the other things going on in the city.
That we can do.
That we can do.
I agree.
You thought I was not going to speak? Melissa Fulton, CEO of the Lake County Chamber. The one thing I know about government, because I worked for a company for many years that dealt in government contracts, is that they look into everything in finite detail. And the fact that you started this project internal to the building, talking to the people who actually exist in this environment and work in this environment, I applaud you for that, because as Kenny, excuse me, Councilmember Parmitar pointed out...
Parmitar?
Parmitar, sorry about that. I'm really sorry about that one. Anyway, Parmitar, pointed out, oftentimes, that's not the case. So, I feel very confident that everything that you've done to bring this project to this point has been done with a lot of discovery, certainly a lot of input from the people who will have a much better working environment. And as a member of the public who comes in here to access different areas, I think it will be a great improvement that will benefit everyone. And I think one of the things that a lot of people in the public don't understand when they hear about projects like this, is that you have pots of money that are intended to be used in certain ways, and there are other pots of money, such as the money that will fix that seawall. I'm not absolutely positive, but I'm pretty sure that you can't use that money to do, you cannot use this money to fix that, or vice versa. So, I mean, that's...
That's a FEMA project, we could use our money, but that would be, we wouldn't get a refund on it.
Exactly.
We waited for FEMA to, which we got all the finals to do, go move forward, and the engineering was gonna be started when the other flood happened, so now that's an engineering process, and so that will be completed soon, yeah. But it takes a long time to go through the FEMA project, so they, so that we can get the coverage for it, and the city doesn't have to put out our money for it.
Right, and the important factor and the important statement that you just made is, if you used your general funds or any other city fund, you would not be reimbursed thereby hurting the residents and your presentation or performance of government for the city. So, thank you, I'm excited to see what it's going to look like.
Thank you, Melissa.
I do understand about the different pots of money, I also understand that we won't be reimbursed if FEMA doesn't pay for it, we pay for it ourselves, but I feel like we're losing a lot of revenue here. Our residents are losing access to the best resource that we have here in the city, our businesses in the downtown, the businesses that host people to stay here, they won't be reimbursed. When we get people that come here to visit, and they look and see that, and they have no idea why, there's no signs, there's, can you imagine someone driving three hours and coming here and being really excited, and then finding out that they don't have very good access there? Sometimes, it's the perception, and the perception is, is that we've got other things going on, and we can't get something opened back up that's been closed for two years. If we're looking at this thing going on being in the third year, who knows, could be more. I'd like to see that those fences come down, I'd like to see the seawall get built, like to see, even if it's a temporary measure, to get that park to be used more. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. So, for our next meeting, could we get an update on where we're at with all this FEMA stuff?
I'm sure Doug will...
I can get an update right now.
I wasn't gonna put you on the spot.
We just did a video, it's on our Facebook page, that for, on the, that Ron's actually speaking about the project.
I suggest that we decide during the communications.
Thank you. All right, anything else in public comment? Bringing it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to award a construction contract to bridge its construction for the City Hall remodel project.
Second? I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Communications. Margaret?
Yes, to go along with the presentation we had on PTU today about preparedness, The West Company, Mary Ann Petroli from The West Company, will be here on May 21st to talk about a workshop she's doing with the businesses in Lake County. There'll be a workshop here in Lakeport and one in Clear Lake. The one in Lakeport's gonna be June 17th, and it's going to help businesses prepare, be prepared for emergencies such as the electrical closure or other emergencies that happen, how to help the businesses be ready. So, she's gonna come next meeting and talk to council about other service she does for businesses here in Lakeport, and talk about what she's gonna present, and hopefully we'll get quite a few businesses there to be there, so I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
David?
You have any further thinking?
Doug?
Probably the only thing I'd really like to bring to council's attention is, on May 14th, we're going to be having a meeting here in City Hall, starting at 6:00 PM, and that's on the 11th Street Corridor Study, so I really try and, we're gonna be going out and putting out, there's bulletins out now, but we're gonna be doing door hangers along the 11th Street Corridor, but it would be great, the more participation we have and looking at the problems that we have on 11th Street and what possible solutions are, it would be fantastic, so I really encourage you guys to please come.
That's it? Thank you. Chief?
Yeah, a couple of things, I just wanted to bring to council's attention that there's a bill moving through the state legislature that is going, if passed, it's going to have effects on, it's going to remove certain provisions from the tow authority in the vehicle code. One of those that I wanted council to be aware of is that, one that is proposed to be eliminated is the police authority to tow a vehicle in violation of a local ordinance for standing 72 or more hours. So, if that gets eliminated, that would effectively, basically shut down, removing any abandoned vehicles from the streets.
It's actually, our league rep has actually said it's actually moving pretty quickly through the legislation, they thought it was gonna die soon, but it's...
What are you better to do?
It's moving forward, yeah, so we should, anybody should contact their legislators about that, otherwise you could have a car parked in front of your home for...
In perpetuity.
What is the bill number?
I don't have it right now, I'll try to look it up here in a second, but I have it in my...
Can you email that to me, please?
Certainly, yeah.
But, I mean, that's a big, we get a lot of complaints in our city about abandoned vehicles, vehicles that people dump or, they don't wanna deal with, they don't wanna remove it, they don't wanna pay the cost, so we end up using that authority to remove it and get it out the street. And a lot of times, we do use the program, the ABA program to pay for it, so. On another note, I just wanted to mention that it kinda goes along with Herman's presentation that three or four of us are going tomorrow to an eight-hour, high-tech PIO training class on using video and live video for pre-emergency and emergency messaging, so I think that's gonna be very beneficial to the city, we'll get a lot more training on doing these short videos and emergency messages, and we're gonna hopefully try to start using that right away.
Also, the reason that bill came up about the towing, it's because of homelessness, they're allowing people to sleep in their vehicles, and so that's kind of what the genesis was of that bill happening, so...
And it's such a good thing to have them do that, and you can't tow away when they're in there.
Protect, so anyway, I'll just probably mention that.
So, is there gonna be some kind of provision if somebody's... Kevin?
Yeah, to follow up to Doug's, regarding to the 11th Street Community Meeting on Tuesday, we also have a community meeting scheduled here in City Hall for Monday the 13th, 5:30 to 7:30, that's the next community meeting related to our upcoming Parks Grant, Prop 68 Park Grant for the development of the Lakefront Park. It's gonna key in on physically coming up with a sort of conceptual plan of what that park would look like under the grant term, so it should be a pretty exciting meeting. There'll be food, right here in this room, 5:30 to 7:30.
What's that date again?
May 13th, Monday, May 13th.
Mr. Mayor, would you also like Doug to give you an update on the FEMA project before you close?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
We all know with the last flood of 2019, that really gave us a setback on that particular project, but what the status is, is it is under contract with an engineering firm, and they are starting an engineering process. Unfortunately, when the floods came, that set them back quite a bit, because they weren't able to get out to do elevations that they needed, but they have started again, and so they're gonna be out here boring within the next couple of weeks to do the soil boring along the wall. Once that boring's done, we do have plans of taking a look at the possibility of removing the broken concrete and then doing some kind of backfill on the city's dime. The biggest problem is, we're gonna have to look at the structure of that wall, that wall might not hold up putting backfill back up against it, because it's gonna put outward pressure on it. So, you know, if we can open it, we'll open it, but if we feel that it's unsafe, we're not going to do that. So, just to kinda give you a real brief, it's moving along, so as soon as we get the engineer plans done, we'll get those approved by FEMA, and then we'll be into the construction phase. So, as we progress, I'll keep bringing the council updates.
It's over a million, it's like, what, a million-two project?
Yeah, probably about a million-eight, actually.
Million-eight?
Yeah.
So, do we have any kind of idea of a timeframe on the horizon?
Well, it honestly depends on the engineering, so if that engineering gets done within the next two to three months, which we're hoping, then I could see us hopefully being able to start late this fall with driving sheet pile. So, that's our goal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your hard work on it, I appreciate you.
I just have one question about Doug.
Yeah, Mike.
Are we 100% sure that FEMA's gonna pay on this?
FEMA has committed to the process, yes.
Are they gonna pay 100%?
FEMA never pays 100%.
Are insurance covering the difference on it?
Right, so typically...
The opposite, FEMA's covering the difference, the insurance doesn't.
At some point, we may have to chip in, too, is the city?
Typically, what's left over is like 6 and 3/4%. So, FEMA pays 75%, and the state OES pays another 18-something percent, and then there's a balance left, and it's about 6 and 1/2%, it's called the match, that we have to pony up.
Doug, isn't that covered by insurance?
Yes, and that would be covered by...
That's not, the city's not ponying up any money for that.
Well, it's, yes, our insurance company, but it comes through the city.
Sometimes, does it pay for the city to pay, have things done, to open it up in small amounts, is that, or does that have to be done, FEMA first, insurance next, and then maybe we reach into our pocket?
Typically, we do actually front the money, and then we ask for reimbursement, so we have to have the money available to pay the contractor when they submit their bill, then we submit to FEMA, and hopefully, within 90 to 180 days, we might get a check. And so, the city is gonna front the money, in essence, but we will be reimbursed for all of that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right.
I would like to say one thing, though, Mike, where you really run into problems is if you start before you've got their blessing and their clearance, and you commit funds, and they decide for whatever reason that you've got a fatal flaw, or they don't wanna reimburse, you're not getting a dime back. So, that was the scary part.
Yeah, no, and I get that, and I appreciate that you're being careful there. It looks so bad, I'm just, I feel bad, I feel bad for the whole city, I can't wait to see those fences come down and see people using the park in full.
I think there's one person that probably feels worse than you do, and that's me.
I know they want more, but...
I've been agonizing over that ever since it happened, and I don't know if you've noticed, but during the 2019, we received more substantial damage to the sidewalk portions, and it's undermined the wall even farther. And that was, the last thing we needed was another flood in 2019. That really hurt us, and so we're doing everything that we can possibly do. If you notice, we've got the center pier open... If you notice, we've got the center pier open, we have that all available to the people. The only thing that they can't use right now is that sidewalk right at the edge of the, of the edge of the water.
I'm glad to see the first brick ran up real.
So, yes, so we're moving forward as fast as we can.
Thank you very much. No, yes, Melissa?
Well, I think Michael had a really good idea, and that is, that I think the city should make up some signs about yay big, and put a half dozen of those along that fence that very succinctly in layman's terms explains why that fence is there.
Maybe a sign, let it look worse than it is now.
Well, but he's got a good point, because people come and they say, what is this all about, and there's no answer.
Yeah.
Look at a nice little shiny brochure.
No, we don't hate any brochures.
All right, wonderful. Talk about signs. Kelly?
No report.
All right. Muriya? No, I got chief. I got, I got you. Where are you? It's your turn now.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to invite people to attend the Lakeport Senior Center Second Sunday Breakfast this Sunday, and then, this isn't the city announcement, but I just wanted to echo Tina's announcement about the Lakeport Visioning Forum, which is going to be at the Sopa Ries on the 16th. So it'd be great if people could show up and participate in that as well.
It's kind of a busy week. No report.
Kenny?
No report.
George?
Well, I got to say this, no report.
No report, have a good night.